Just ask councillor Ty to mute his microphone and councillor Anderson please.
We are now live on YouTube and I make it seven o'clock.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the extraordinary meeting of Skegness Town Council on Wednesday, the 24th of June 2020. Agenda item, note it by giving the whole meeting. Agenda item number one, minutes of the last meeting, they're attached to receive and consider or adopt or otherwise the minutes of the meeting of the council held on Wednesday, the 6th of May 2020. Pages 70, 71, 72, 73, 74 and page 75.
And it should be also pages 76, 7 and 8, which are the payments.
Sorry, yeah, 76, 77, 78, sorry. We've got those councillor Kirk, please.
I'm happy to propose and adopt the minutes, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Edington? Councillor Edington?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Shall we go for the vote in favour?
Now then, this could be a tricky one.
Oh councillor Dennis and Finlay have put their, raised their hands and also we need to ask councillor Cunningham regarding his. They have five votes.
Yeah councillor Cunningham?
Four.
Okay, do we need to raise our hands then town clerk or is there another screen?
There's two people councillor Dennis and councillor Finlay have got their hands raised, so.
Yeah councillor councillor Dennis, sorry. Councillor Dennis?
I'm voting for the motion, that's what you asked me to do, that's what I'm doing.
I think we've got a poll now councillor Dennis, sorry.
There's nothing on the screen, is there, apart from what we normally have?
No.
Oh right, okay.
Hence the confusion.
It just says polling progress town clerk.
Right.
I did my, I did, I did put down my.
Well I can't see that anywhere.
Six people responded, four plus councillor Cunningham, that's seven. Can we take, we'll have to do it with the hands then, if that's not going to work, we're going to have to abandon the polling and use the hands again.
Do you want, can I just ask Mr Mayor, do you want the, the hands that's on the, on the iPad, or do you want to just do that?
Yeah, the hands on the iPad and then the town clerk can see those ones. I can, I can see those, yeah. Sorry about that, we thought this poll was going to work but obviously hasn't, so.
Seems like it's worked for some people but not others.
Right. So we still need to vote councillor Ty, councillor Brooks, councillor Burnham, councillor Cunningham. And councillor Saxon, I've seen, is in the room now. Councillor Ty? Yeah, I've got your on view, yeah, that's okay. And councillor Cunningham, you've already answered, thank you. Have you got all those town clerk?
Yes, it's majority, so.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Okay. Okay, if you'd like to lower your hands. If you'd like to lower your hands on the screen, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number two, to note apologies received by the town clerk prior to the meeting.
Yeah, we have apologies from councillor Barry, Dee Brooks, Dee Brooks, Emson and S Kirk.
Okay, can I just ask councillor Anderson, councillor Ty and councillor Saxon to turn their microphones off please?
I've done it three times.
Yeah, me too.
You've just undone it again, councillor Edington, your microphone, sorry.
Beg your pardon, sorry.
Okay. Councillor Brooks, did you want to speak? Got your hand up.
Yes, please, thank you Mr Mayor. Just a quick one, it's not got the usual options, you know, when you go on to the participants list, it hasn't got the, the actual buttons that are usually there for me. It's often to go to more and then click it.
No, I'm not sure, I've got raise hand, mute or rename, is that, is that right?
Yeah, I ain't got that.
Oh, right.
Never mind.
Okay, well persevere, we've got a technical problem then tonight but we'll move on and we'll get through it. Agenda item number three, to receive declarations of interest. Is there anybody wanting to declare any interest? No. Okay, moving on to agenda item number four, minutes of the planning and planning policy committee attached, to receive, consider and adopt or otherwise the minutes of the planning, planning policy committee, Wednesday 3rd of June 2020.
Yeah, there's a couple of amendments to this. Firstly councillor Blackburn was actually present at the meeting but it hasn't been recorded as such. And also because this is the first planning meeting of the new year, the page numbering should have started at page one. And so we will adjust that and remember from that page.
Okay, thank you. We've got anybody that wants to move those?
I'll move the minutes, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Carpenter, we've got a second for that please. Councillor Kirk?
I'm happy to second those, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, all raise your hands and please show. Councillor Ty, we've got you on there, yeah. Got councillor Claxton to vote, councillor Saxon, councillor Cunningham, would you like to vote councillor Cunningham? Councillor Cunningham, please.
Hand should be up, Mr Mayor.
Your hand should be, oh it is now, yeah. I think we've got some, got some gremlins tonight. We haven't got a vote from councillor Anderson, councillor Ty put his hand up, councillor Saxon. So that's a majority.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number five, to consider and approve the annual governance statements account and annual return 2019, 2020. Report and appendices attached, including annual return for 2019, 20 accounts and asset register.
Mayor, the, I hope that most councillors will remember from last year. Certainly the, those that have been serving for some time will remember this as the usual process for adopting and approving the accounts. There is a strict process that has to be followed and that is the annual return and accountability. Papers have to be approved first. If you look at your papers, you'll see a list of statements. This is in section one of the papers that you have. Now what this is doing is actually saying that you've got in place appropriate controls and governance of the accounts. Now, how do you know that you have these in, in place? Well firstly, you have the internal auditor that says everything is in order. But secondly, quarter, the management committee meets and discusses the accounts, the procedures, risk management, all of the governance items and is able to raise any concerns with council and myself at that time. So through the course of the year, you've gone through and carried out checks. There are also basic checks like bank reconciliations which get signed off and presented back to council.
Can I, sorry, can I just, can I just ask councillor Anderson to turn his microphone off? We're getting, we're not getting a clear message from you town clerk.
Uh, yeah, if I turn mine off, I won't be able to hear you then.
Oh right, okay. Just a bit of background noise, it just breaks the town clerk. Okay, we'll try and continue, sorry councillor Anderson.
That's okay.
Sorry town clerk.
Okay, so the, then there are nine statements and in statements one to eight, you need to respond yes. For number nine, you need to say not applicable. Now, if it were the case that you decided that you couldn't say yes, you, one of those one to eight, you would need to put in plan, put in place plan to actually say how you're going to meet those items. So for the public's benefit, I'll quickly run through them. Putting in place arrangements for effective financial management during the year and the preparation of the accounting statements. We maintained an adequate system of internal control, including measures designed to prevent and protect fraud and corruption and the effectiveness. We took all reasonable steps to assure ourselves that there are no matters of actual non-compliance with law, regulations and proper practices that could have a significant financial effect on the ability of your company to conduct business. We provided proper opportunity during the year for the exercise of electors' rights in accordance with the requirements of the accounts and audit regulations. That just means that they're open for inspection at a given time in the year. And we carried out assessment of the risks facing this authority and took appropriate steps to manage those risks, including the introduction of internal controls and or external insurance where appropriate. We maintained throughout the year an adequate and effective system of internal audit of the accounting records and processes. We took appropriate action on all matters raised, reports from internal and external audit. And we considered whether any litigation liabilities or commitments, events or transactions occurring either during or after the year end have a financial impact on this authority and where appropriate included them in the accounts. And there are, we're not aware of those at this time. So before we can proceed to the next step, which is then the approval of the actual accounts and the other recommendations in my report, you need to answer to those questions.
Okay councillor Dennis, please. Councillor Dennis? Councillor Finlay?
Yeah, just to clarify Steve, if we've got any queries within the figures, are we to, are we to respond to this as, yes, we approve and then question it at the management committee, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is that throughout the year, you've had an opportunity at each quarter to go through the figures, to look at the risk assessments that have been produced and, and changes to those have been suggested and, and implemented throughout the year. You, you have an opportunity to react to the internal audit report and the external audit report. Last year there were no comments on either and the internal auditor has made no comments. There has been a letter gone to the mayor which basically sets out that everything is in order. And so these, these statements are saying your procedures are in place and correct. This is not regarding the detailed figures. We get on to the detailed figures, the actual accounting sales. Once you've said that all the procedures are in place and are operating effectively.
So basically, we're not accepting these figures, we're just moving them to the management?
No, no. The, at this moment in time, there are two parts to this particular report. The first part is to say that your procedures are okay. Once that, you've made that statement, you're then in a position to approve the accounts. And you will be looking to approve those accounts. I've signed them off as being an accurate representation of the council's actual income and expenditure. As I say, councillors have had an opportunity throughout the year to query any of those amounts. And indeed, every single council meeting, you have an opportunity to query any expenditure amounts. So I would be surprised if there are any queries on the accounts at this stage unless it's a, 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 a hyper graphical error. But so what we're asking at this point in time is for you to consider statements one to eight with a view to saying yes to those and statement nine is not applicable for this council, so they not applicable.
Okay councillor Anderson, please.
Yeah, I'm moving one to eight.
Okay councillor Dan Kirk?
I'll second that, Mr Mayor.
Okay, in all favour, please raise your hands on the screen, thank you. Councillor Ty's got his up on his hand. Councillor Saxon? Councillor Saxon?
He's raised his hand.
Oh, I can't, okay, I can't see him on my screen, okay, so that's.
That's everybody.
That's everybody. Yes, thank you. If you'd like to lower your hands, thank you. Okay, agenda item number six?
Yeah, we're still on, we're still on the same agenda item. So that was effectively 3.1A that you voted on. The rest you can consider as a, a block if you wish to. And that's the approval of the accounting statements in section two of the annual return. Including the end of year reserve, the register, the places you write off as set out in the appendix of the short report. To also approve the annual, that the annual return be open to the public. And that would be starting next week through to the beginning of August. And then the finally to note the content of the internal audit report that I mentioned earlier. No action is required at this time on that.
Councillor Anderson?
Yeah, just, just a quickie to the town clerk. Any comment from the auditor regarding the reserves?
Um, no specific comments at this point because the, the reserves, the council took action last year to increase the reserves. I think we will have to look at reserves through this coming year because clearly there's been with Covid-19, a big drop in potential income, which is going to eat into the general reserve this year. And therefore council will need to consider whether that's at a suitable level as we move through 2020, 21.
Can I quickly come back regarding what the town clerk has said, totally agree. My concern is if we spike again with Covid-19 in the win, in the winter, therefore we need some healthy reserves in place, just in case we need to spend money.
Thank you. Would you like to comment on that town clerk or?
Well, the reserves are where they are at this moment in time. There's no new opportunity in 2021 to raise the reserves. So I, I believe based on the information we've had so far, the, and as I've mentioned in previous council report, this year, cash flow wise, we will be okay. It's when we go into 2021, 22, reserves are likely to be at a low level. Now council at the last meeting agreed that certain monies owing to the council in, in the form of rent could be deferred. The, that income might be deferred over a few years, depending on, on what agreements we can come to. There is a big drop is in car park income because we've had virtually no car park income as yet. And we are likely not to achieve anywhere near the budgeted amount for this year. So I easily see us being £20,000 down on the income from car parking. We've lost out on bookings to a hall which we had booked, we had £11,000 worth of income identified for this year through hall bookings. And I think we're going to lose the, the bottom priority of that because in, inside, you know, the start-up of parties and things like that, I think it's going to take a while to get back.
So can I, sorry, can I ask just a quick question regarding car parks? Are we following easily a decision not to charge for our car park?
No, we are charging for our car parks.
We are charging.
We are.
Okay.
And, and they are charging, they're only charging, they're all charging for the full shore ones. It's just the town ones.
Just the amenity ones.
The amenity ones, yeah. Councillor Dan Kirk, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to propose that we support the recommendation D, sorry, B, C and D on block.
And I'll second that, yeah.
I've got councillor Dennis in, please.
No, they've sorted it.
Okay, thank you councillor Dennis. Okay, if you're in favour of this, you've taken on the vote for B, 3.1B, C and D in block, so all vote please. Councillor Ty, we've got you. Has councillor Saxon got his hand up? I can't see him on my screen. Just councillor Saxon, I'm missing. Yeah, I think that's, that's carried, thank you. Okay, agenda item number seven, to review and approve standing orders, proposal attached.
Mayor, there's agenda item six, which is the appointment of the internal auditor for the coming year.
Oh sorry, have I missed that one, sorry. Circled it, moving on to it.
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy for the town clerk to audit the accounts.
Okay, thank you. We've got councillor Burnham? Councillor Burnham?
Councillor Burnham, your mic is muted, so.
It's all right, your screen went off as well. Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, councillor Brooks?
Yeah, I was just gonna do, I was just gonna do the same, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Adrian Finlay? Councillor, now it's reduced, maybe he's done. Okay, so we've got it proposed and seconded. All go to the vote, thank you. Okay, that's carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item number seven, to review and approve the standing orders, the proposal attached.
Mayor, this is, normally we do this after annual council, but we've been delayed this year in getting this. There are some amendments. Last year, we moved this new template which was designed by NOW. And, and there were some changes made, we modified the NOW template because obviously that applies to very tiny parish councils through to, you know, the larger, so it's always a compliment. And the areas that have been changed are marked with an ash on the left-hand side. Some of them are just formatting changes, but I will go through and pick out the main, the main ones. So on page five, the removal of that paragraph, the approval which was previously seen, is really just to make sure that the council and committee meetings are aligned. There is, there's been for some time to lack of clarity over what is a clear day. And it is defined for council meetings, but it's then not clearly for committee meetings. And this just is going to clarify that. Then on page seven, I've added in there the meetings with video, we help our video conferencing where legislation permits, that technology can be used to vote. And you're actually doing that with the, the electronic show of hands, so that's just to make sure that that, that's tidied up. On page eight, under committees, this is to do with what committees can do and what they can delegate. And it has to be within the powers that council has granted that committee and it's just clarifying that matter. And on B on page, or B on page eight, that's to do with staffing matters may only be considered by councillors. So if non-council members were appointed to a committee, they wouldn't be able to, to work again, when verification. On page nine five, literally just again pointing out a minimum of two working days prior to the meeting. And on eight, not less than one third of the whole number of members of councils is a quorum. And this is something that was, has been discussed a few times because it wasn't clear. It had previously been clear in the standing orders but wasn't clear in last year's. That's to, that, that's effectively if council delegated responsibility to a committee to make a decision, then there has to be a third of council present to make that decision. That's to avoid council giving delegated authority to a committee and then that committee having a very small majority, a very small number of people on it. And then, then that's a small number. I mean, it could be as small as three with the mayor, with the chairman of that committee with a passing vote, making decisions on behalf of council. So that's to bring it back up to the third of council, which if you read the legislation, it does actually say council decisions should have a third of members present. I think it's, this is a lack of clarity in the legislation and this clarifies that position. And also on page nine, this is really again regarding, nobody foresaw Covid. So the annual meeting is supposed to take place every year. There's been emergency legislations put in place. So I've just added that unless a, a legislation permits then not to be an annual meeting. And moving on to page 10, that, if you look at J3, that is to allow council to defer items from the annual generally, annual meeting of council to a special meeting. That's to avoid, there's such a lot of business, is to avoid the annual meeting going on for hours and to allow the mayor making to happen. Then moving forward to page 13, again putting back in a point which previously in standing orders, that's point 10A9, that's to consider a report of an auditor or committee. And that's, if we didn't have that in place, I wouldn't be able to ask council to say, we've had this situation, what are your instructions? we've had this situation, what are your instructions? If we didn't have that in place. So, and similarly, a committee couldn't make an urgent report after the agenda had been set out. So there's that, moving on. Page 18.
Sorry, town clerk, there's one on page 16.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. I've turned over, it's me glasses, it's me glasses, it's 18, sorry.
Yeah, page 18, at the bottom of the page. This is to allow emergency action to be taken in a crisis situation as long as it's then reported as soon as possible back to council. And this ties in with also with the financial regulations. And if you look at, under the responsibilities of the responsible financial office on page 19, that's to have delegated power to act financially in an emergency as well. So in other words, money, money by the business out in financial way. Turning to page 20. This is just adding in accordance with statutory guidelines. I mean, it's just, again, a clarification of how it should be done. On page 21, there is a section that is going to change when the UK finally sort of exits all of the parts of the EU. That will change, or is likely to change. But I've left it in at this moment in time because that hasn't yet happened. 22F, just adding an extra word in there to make it that it's only persons with line management responsibility can have access to file records. On page 24, again, this is clarifying when standing orders can be expanded, if you like, or changed. There has to be at least two thirds of council present if it's not on a published agenda. So if you want to waive a standing order, you have to have two thirds of council present. Again, this is to prevent, if you didn't have that, a third of council, seven councillors, could waive standing orders, give themselves powers to do things. And then change the whole way in which council works without two thirds of council knowing about it. So that just prevents that happening. And then everything else is a protocol rather than standing order. And it is just a minor change in the protocol to say that the date of the photograph for council is at the mayor's discretion. But those are the standing orders.
Okay, thank you councillor Finlay.
You got it, Mr Dave. Steve, me and was up previously, I was trying to find it on my phone. I had an issue with a previous item that's now been voted against and it's gone. So I'll send you an email tomorrow regarding that, the issue on that, if you can, please.
That's fine.
Yeah, all right then, mate, thank you. That's all it was.
Councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Could I please ask, I don't know whether this is possible, whether there's any way, shape or form of this being done, but is there any chance I could get an updated copy of the standing orders and delegated powers onto a memory pen for me to be able to actually use through my screen reader? The ones we received in the agenda, I don't know why we struggled to read them. And trying to use them for reference at any point in time is very difficult trying to get back to. So if you can get them on a memory pen, please, for the standing orders and the delegated powers. Is that possible?
Mayor, yes, and what we'll do is we've put in a document.
Hold on, Steve.
Councillor Finlay, can you turn your microphone? Oh, there's just councillor Anderson's and councillor Saxon. Can you turn your microphones off, please, if you can?
Then I won't be able to hear you.
Well, that's the same as the rest of us, councillor Anderson.
Councillor Cunningham.
Yeah, answering councillor Cunningham's question. What we, I believe the problem he's probably had is because it's got formatting within the document which would make it difficult, I can understand that. What we would do is clean up the document once it's approved. And we will renumber the front page because that may have gone out of kilter by the time all of those changes are made. And then we will publish the cleaned up version on the council's website. If councillor Cunningham wants it in a different format to that that is available on the website, which would be a PDF. So if you prefer it in a Word document or some other format, we can convert it and make it available to him in that format. However he wants it.
Does that answer your question, councillor Cunningham?
Yeah, if I, like I say, if we can just get a copy of the standing orders and the delegated powers, the up to date ones, on a memory pen. I can get them picked up from the office or, and then it's easier to read at any point in time and refer back to in a case like this. Whereas I can't read it through the papers, it'd be much appreciated.
No problem, we can sort that for you.
It'll take a couple of days to get it sorted and this document to be cleaned up and ready to probably be next week.
Yeah, I'm happy if it's a few weeks to do because I've asked for the powers as well. So I can understand it can take a bit of time, it's not priority, but it would, it would help me.
Good, we will sort that out for you councillor Cunningham.
Thank you.
Thank you, town clerk. Councillor Dan Kirk, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think what's happened, just in response to this not being readable. I think what's happened is this is a document that has been scanned in as an image with no optical character recognition in place, which is why a screen reader will not be able to understand it. So if you could just kindly instruct administration to, where possible, refrain from scanning in printed documents. And that will help with, with special educational needs with regards to readability.
I know on, with certain documents, depending on how they were originally formatted, we have had a job printing into PDF format. And in those cases, that's why the documents have been printed and scanned back into PDF. And that's probably what's happened with this document. I mean, it's a bit of an ongoing issue with some types of documents. It's mainly, I think, where they've been, the original template has been created elsewhere. It seems to cause a problem with that. So we can get a Word document version.
Just review the process, I think.
Yeah, out.
But on, on the main point in which I wish to speak, Mr Mayor, I'm happy to adopt standing orders with the changes as identified by the clerk, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second for that, please?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. All in favour, please, show your hands on screen. Councillor Carpenter still to vote, councillor Dennis, councillor Tony, I can see your hand, yeah, that's it. Okay, that's carried, thank you. Lower your hands, thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item number eight, to review and approve the financial regulations, the proposal is attached.
Same type of document, this relates to the, obviously, the financial regulations. There are fewer changes on this, I will go through and identify those that are the main ones. There are a few, again, formatting changes. Just to add into, on page eight of 22, at the top, approved projects. It's during the course of the year, council may approve a project with a budget revenue budget, and that needs to be covered. It's not just everything that's in the budget at the beginning of the year. So these are, this is to account for new things coming through the year. Further down, just to say that the authorisation slip could be signed by me or someone delegated by me. And 4.6 on the same page, a change of the limit from 2,500 to 3,000. That's really just to rationalise because 3,000 is mentioned elsewhere in this document and elsewhere. And that's really, that could have been changed last year. That's to tie it all up together. Then we go over to page 11, 6.7. And this is just to widen the type of descriptor of what can be paid for by direct debit. And there is a direct debit list attached, there's an attachment with the papers that show the current organisations where we have direct debits in place. And as part of the refresh of the standing orders, you're actually effectively reapproving that list. So I can add to it, but it has to be reported back to council. And council can view it on an annual basis effectively. Moving forward to page 12, 6.12. This is really now to deal with information that's not stored by the council on its own computers, but elsewhere. So for example, in, use Microsoft Office 365 and that has associated online story. So it's really saying that where that is the case, they will have backup procedures in place and guarantees about the availability of information and documents. Where it's onsite, it remains the same. On page 13, this is, again, is about payment performance and how new account information to pay is recorded. Often now, the standing order, the financial regulations were originally written when everything was done by snail mail and hard copy. The reality is now that accounts are, you know, published on websites and we deal with those companies by email. So it's, it's really just allowing for that to be happening. At the bottom of the page 13, and over the other page, allows for changes in the national minimum wage. Clearly, if that goes up, then the council, in order to comply with the law, has to react to that. Moving on to page 16, it talks there about formal orders in 10.1. This is just to recognise that many things are now all online and that online shopping baskets that are submitted are effectively the same as formal orders. And those, those usually come back in the form of an email confirmation has been ordered. Then moving on to page 19, again, around delivery notes. Often, physical delivery notes are not necessarily presented because the, the company delivering will often trigger an email. So it may come in in a different format. So I'm saying wherever possible, we will seek those, but I'm guarantee that we will definitely get them in the, in the format that was previously allowed for. So those are the changes, as I say, there are a few minor typo changes and format changes as well.
Thank you. Councillor Cunningham.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, that must have been up from previous.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Edgington. Councillor Edgington. Councillor Dan Kirk.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just one, another observation on page one, the address only changing, town clerk.
Yes. It's sort of become blind to these things sometimes, yes, no, we will change it.
So used to it being the old one. Councillor Anderson, please.
Yeah, a couple of questions to the town clerk, please. First one is, as I mentioned, when it comes to pay and salaries under GDPR rules about confidential items and obviously information commissioner being involved and secrecy regarding data. And obviously, on the one that you just mentioned on page 16, more and more people are buying online now, that's what you said, the town clerk. But lots of people are being hacked as well, myself was included. And that was through Amazon as well. And what security have we got in place to make sure that there is full protection if we get hacked whilst buying online? Thank you.
Okay, councillor, sorry, town clerk, is councillor Saxon, is he waiting to join the meeting? I've just got a message and he said he's waiting to join, he's waiting to join. If you just authorize him back in the room, please. Right, okay, sorry, if you'd like to continue, sorry about that.
But in response to the first part, which was in relation to pay in GDPR, and there is an information management policy, which is part of the tweaked policies that this council has. And that deals with that the information security and who can access and how information is recorded and passed on to others. And there are privacy statements as well, these are all available on the council's website. Similarly, with pay, there's a pay policy that's approved annually. That sets out how, how we ensure that we've got equal pay for equal work essentially and how salaries are calculated. The in relation to the online shopping experience, the council's recently upgraded its IT system. And without going into too much detail, it has got, you know, it is a secure system with proper, you know, password authentication. Clearly, we have things like antivirus type software running to, to avoid programmes being brought into the council systems that might enable things like passwords and data to be copied. And they're there to protect the council in that respect. And they're obviously checked in terms of, mainly, we operate on an account basis. So we do occasionally use the council's credit card, but that is relatively few occasions. Mostly, we set up an account with the provider, including organisations like Amazon. And then that account is a business account and we have a, we have a behind the scenes process of payment. It isn't via the actual website itself. So they're not holding our payment details in the vast majority of cases. Where we do use the council's credit card, we always choose the option not to remember any of the payment details.
Thank you. That's, yeah, parrot size, yeah.
Okay, thank you councillor Anderson. Councillor Dan Kirk, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. With the amendment on page one, I'm happy to. Thank you, Mr Mayor. With the amendment on page one, I'm happy to adopt the financial regulation policy as dictated. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Councillor Eggington. Councillor Eggington, please. Councillor Eggington. Still got your microphone switched off. We lost councillor Eggington, who is still in the room.
Any, any better?
Yeah.
I can hear you now, you can hear you.
Yes, I was going to second that along with councillor Anderson. Sorry about the delay.
No problem, thank you. Okay, well, so you know what we're voting for? If you'd like to go to the vote, please show your hands. Councillor Ty, I can't see councillor Saxon, so I don't know if he's got his hand up. And just councillor Saxon.
Mr Mayor.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I'm cross all together now. Councillor Saxon's got his microphone on now. Sorry, councillor Connington.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, could we just please reiterate and ask members to turn their microphones off? I'm getting a lot of feedback and it's.
I am too. We've got councillor Eggington still with his microphone on. We know councillor Anderson has got issues. Councillor Carpenter, oh, he's gone off for some reason. I don't know. That's gone off now. Okay, hopefully you can hear now. I'm getting the same feedback, so we're trying to. We know councillor Anderson's got an issue, so we're going through that one. That's not a problem. I'll get through this. Okay, so you've gone to the vote. I think that is carried, doesn't it? Well, it did. No. People take it. We've got councillor Carpenter to vote. Councillor Dennis. I think we, we did have the votes. They just lowered their hands. I think they were there, town clerk. Just before councillor Connington come in.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Look, they were all there. There was just councillor Saxon. I couldn't see him on my screen, so it was, was carried. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number nine. If you'd like to lower your hands on the screen, please, gentlemen and ladies. So I can't. Thank you. Agenda item number nine, re-establishing services following the COVID-19 lockdown. A report and risk assessments attached. Town clerk.
Right, so even since writing this, some of the regulations have changed. Yeah, they change on a daily and weekly basis. So apologies that they, they may be slightly outdated, but we'll try and update as we go through. So I've set out in section two the, the staff, staffing implications of how we've worked through this. Generally speaking, I think we've coped pretty well. We've got most, most staff working in some capacity. There were one or two members of staff for whom working at certain times wasn't possible. And we've accommodated them through the various methods and that might, might be paying back the time or it might be taking leave or unpaid leave, those sorts of things. But the, in the office, I've then go into a bit more detail about each of the sections. Lots of things, you know, are still happening. You know, we still can have meetings and things like that. Some are working from home, some are working part of the time from home, some are in the office. We are, because of the disruption, we are behind on the number of items. And 3.8 sets out those, those main things that we've, we would have expected to have either tackled or started to tackle by now, and we haven't yet got to that form. There's also the issue of the move from the town hall to the new building. And there is still some furniture and equipment and a lot of other boxed up in sort of information and memorabilia at the town hall. And that needs to be moved, but we need to be in a position to be able to do that safely. And the relaxing of the regulations to one metre will start to help with that. But we still need to carry out a proper risk assessment so that we're we've got, we've got those in place for people to be able to operate properly. So hopefully, moving forward, the plan is that we've got two to three people in the office during July, moving through August and into the autumn period. Hopefully, it will become a bit more normalised by that time. We want to get those outstanding items caught up and there are a couple of more urgent ones which we'll have to tackle, but to get the rest of them before January meeting of council so that everything's pulled up by then. I mean, clearly situations can change. There's a second spike or, you know, lockdown is reintroduced or anything like that, that may change it. Moving on to the grounds team, I think the grounds team have done a really good job. I mean, they have been hampered by not being able to share vehicles in the way that they, they used to do. So this has meant that getting round around and about the town has been more difficult and it's taken a bit longer to get the cuts we normally see done. So the grass is probably a little bit longer than it, it would have normally otherwise been. Similarly, in the cemetery, usual burial services and maintenance is, is being maintained there. And we have noticed there's been an increase in the amount of waste during lockdown. And we've even seen people putting things like tower computers and the such like in the general waste bins out on the places like Beresford Field, for instance. Which is, that's increased our costs and it's causing a few problems in terms of being able to get around frequently enough. Keep those bins empty, suggesting that we, we actually put a bigger bin at Beresford Field. It's one of the small post town ones and it overflows in a very short period of time. We can put a bigger bin there. That will allow us to not have to visit quite as frequently, which will help again in terms of the overall staffing situation. Tower Gardens, pretty much as, you know, as usual, if anybody's been to Tower Gardens, I think it actually looks as good as it's, it's, it's been, I think. Looks very good. As I reported previously, we're not doing the basket in Lumley Road this year. Unfortunately, the timing of the lockdown coincided with when the plant, when the ordering and everything would have happened. And it's just not, those are not available. And on Castleton Boulevard, there was the highways work was ran quite late and it meant that we weren't able to get those sorted either. So, but I do want to report that a member of the grounds team, in their own time, has grown some plants for the council and those have been split up between the cemetery, where that person works, and Tower Gardens. And there's just a little photograph that just shows a small selection of what they've done. And I think, you know, a time when everybody's under pressure, I think this is a really nice touch and, and should be commended. You know, that member of staff has gone over and above, I think, the help, make sure that we've got, you know, a town that, that, certainly in Tower Gardens and the cemetery that, that is going to look good. So I'd like to send a letter of appreciation on behalf of the council for that member of staff, just to recognise that they've done over and above what they would normally be. And moving on to the cafe. This is really a far, you know, fast moving situation now with announcements this week that we can open. And this was written, we were looking at doing takeaways with hopefully the possibility of then maybe having a few chairs and that outside. So we're still working on a respective menu because I think that's a sensible thing to do, given the current circumstances. But the idea is that we will have now socially distanced chairs and tables outside. It would be, as I mentioned in the report, it would be useful if council could approve the occasional use of the bandstand. Perhaps when weather's not quite as good, it might just enable a few more people to enjoy the cafe during those times. The electronic point of sale systems has been purchased and is being programmed for opening so that we can hold all of the information that's needed, both legally in terms of things like that and so have you, but all for our accounts, but also so that we can provide management information back on what's selling, what isn't selling and where the sort of potential contributions to council funds will come from. Plans has laid out in the business plan to sell ice creams outside. Again, that will help the situation in respect of that social distancing. If we can sell them outside, then that will mean people haven't got to join the queue to get into place and order. It's a movable freezer, so it will be stored inside during, you know, normally and just taken outside when we're going to serve ice creams. And there'll probably be cold drinks, things like that served from there. The recruitment of the staff, as you know, council gave permission for permanent supervisor and for me to appoint casual staff at the moment. And I think it's proven, it's been prudent not to appoint the supervisor position permanently to do that on a temporary contract through to the end of December. That will give, give us an opportunity, should there be a, a change in the direction of the COVID-19 restriction again. And that will give us, you know, an opportunity to terminate if necessary. And the hours that I've allocated are lower than those that were approved by council previously again. Because at the time of writing, I thought that we would only be working outside on takeaways. It seemed, yeah, that, that number of hours, we wouldn't need the number of hours. But the contract allows us to obviously employ that person for more hours. And with the restrictions being lifted, I expect us to be busier than, than, than previously I thought. In terms of social distancing inside, I think we are going to try and stick certainly in the queuing to a two metre rule inside, just to protect the staff that are serving and, and also to protect the customers in that inside. Outside, we will, we will probably look at, relook at that and certainly it won't be, we, we'd be able to comply with the one metre ruling quite easily, but we may look to increase that slightly with the space available. So as I say, in terms of, if it was possible to have permission to use the bandstand when it's not being used for anything else, that would be good. The recommendations are that you note the report and adopt the approach that I've taken. You approve the occasional use of the bandstand for a small seating area. In appendix A, I should have mentioned these actually, are the risk assessments. Now, we are duty bound to have those risk assessments. And so that's for each area of our work that we carry out, we've carried out a risk assessment, including the cafe. And seeking there is approval for me to sign those off. And we have to actually have them available and display them. And also then, the final point is to thank the member of the grounds team that set out, as I set out, and he's right in the left of the thanks.
Okay, thank you, town clerk. Just before bringing the councillors back in, certainly do agree with that. For somebody going above their, their work and a little thank you goes a long way, certainly in these difficult times that they've been faced with. So I recommend that we go with that. Okay. Councillor Anderson, please.
Yeah, I totally agree with you, Mr Mayor. I was going to write in and thank the staff for what they've done through these, these horrible times through the pandemic. And I think they've gone over and above the communication I've received from local residents around where I live whilst walking my dog, is actually how well the staff are in, in actually how courteous they are when they, when people are walking down King George V walk and how well maintained everything is. And I walked over to Tower Gardens today and it was just a pleasure to see people relaxing and enjoying and sitting on the grass in beautiful settings. And it's just lovely to see. I'd just like to publicly say a big, big thank you to our staff and working under these, you know, difficult conditions. In doing so, I'll second, if you know, I'll, I can move it with the bandstand and the letter from yourself and the rest of the town council to the member of the grounds team.
Thank you, councillor Anderson. As we say, they do amazing job to be fair and they're.
Absolutely.
Councillor Billy Brooks, please.
Yeah, I was just going to say the same about the grounds team that I know Beresford Field, I've never seen so many people playing on there. The Tower Gardens, it all looks so, so great. But I would also mention about the bins on Beresford Field. I agree, yeah, a new bin would be good as well, but maybe even a couple more. It could be something that's looked at, but.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Councillor Dan Kirk, please.
Leave councillor Anderson made a proposal there. I'm happy to second those, including, well, all the recommendations on block.
Okay, thank you. So you know what we're voting for? If you've got all that, raise your hands on screen, please. And I can't see councillor Saxon on the screen. If councillor Saxon's got his hand up on screen, then that's carried. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 10, the towns fund reports provided by councillor Tony Ty.
Councillor Ty. Yes, I hope you, I hope you had the opportunity to read the reports. The one thing that we must make a decision on this evening is the decision of Eastwick District Council are in favour of a one bid, two plans, one bid. Both, well, Mabel Thorpe are against it and I believe perhaps Dennis is against it. And I'm certainly against it. I believe we should have two plans, two bids. So that's my recommendation to the town council.
Yes, thank you. I can't speak on all the councillors, but we did say that, I think, at district as well, so I think it's mirrored through. Councillor Adrian Finley, please. Councillor Finley.
No, we've got to take it off again.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, councillor Anderson.
Yeah, obviously I must be out of the loop because obviously I haven't heard what the bids actually are. Has there been any public consultation to what the bids are? Because if we're talking about the guidance notes, which was given to us, there has to be economic drivers as part of the bid. And without knowing what the bids are. be economic drivers as part of the bid, and without knowing what the bids are, okay, and what's being put in place, it's not only me, but townspeople, this is supposed to be for the town, not for East Lindsay, but for Skegness Town and the residents of the town. So, you know, I am blind, most of all our constituents are blind, because they don't know what these bids are, and obviously, it's public money, so there needs to be some scrutiny regarding what is in the bid and what's the economic drivers in creating jobs, education, and all the other things, sustainability, environmental issues, all this kind of, kind of things should be in the open for us all when you're dealing with public money, and I don't, I've not seen anything. So, again, I'm concerned about it, and I'll stop there.
Excuse me, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, I'm on councillor Connington, we've got other people with their hands up.
Yeah, well, I just want to bring a point of order in. I'm actually taking offence to the comments, it's three times now councillor Anderson has used that term tonight, I do take offence, and it's point of order, and I will put in a formal complaint against that gentleman.
Thank you councillor Connington. Councillor Dan Kirk.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'd like to listen to what councillor Dennis has to say, and I'll come back after that, if that's okay.
No problem. Councillor Dennis, please. Councillor Dennis.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, it's more or less, as Tony said, it's in the report, if you read the report, it tells you where we're at, you know, I'm chairman of the, of the towns fund committee for Skegness, we've got all sorts of people on that committee and on the main board, and we looked at it, and Tony and Ty and myself, and we all agreed that Mabel Thorpe has one offer, and Skegness is a totally different offer. Skegness is looking at a new educational campus on the industrial estate, also, we're looking, moving forward, using that during the summertime for park and ride, we're also looking at putting incubation business units on there, we're looking at the big picture, look at educating our kids. It's all in the report, it's all on, what we've put through, it's all there, it's going to be a massive thing, because this, this towns fund is not like the bid, this is, the towns fund is a totally different thing, it's about infrastructure, it's about forward-looking, it's about 30 years ahead of itself, it's about sea defences, it's also about using some shovel-ready things that East Lindsay have got on board, but trust me, it is not going to be a vehicle for East Lindsay to put their shovel-ready things in place, because we shouldn't be having that, even though I'm an East Lindsay district councillor. There are things, there is, there is something to do with the pitch input that's there, but the bid are not, as far as my committee is concerned, the bid are not committing any of that money, I think you'll agree, Tony, we agree that that money wouldn't be put into there. There's also a look where the old voting lake was, where they used to have the fireworks, it's turning that into some sort of arena, so we can have concerts and stuff like that. But also, the big picture is the kids, big picture is education, education, education. We've got people on the board who run businesses like myself, who have a massive budget on training, and we discussed it at the meeting, not one penny of our budgets that we spend on training, and I've got an apprentice and people going for training, I've got neighbours in health and safety and Rams and risk assessments and everything, my type of business, not one penny of the money I spend, not one penny, the money that Fenn and Laundry spend, actually comes to Lincolnshire. It all goes out of Lincolnshire, it goes to Limsby, yeah, or, when I say Lincolnshire, out of East Lindsay, it goes into Boston, not one penny of the money we spend. And what we want to do is, we want to bring that education to our kids, and we want to, so it's a qualification, so the hospitality is a qualification, so the kids can work in the summer, adults can work in the summer and make their money, and then when they're quiet in the winter, they can carry on with the training. It's a big picture, 30 years hence, it's a big thing, you know, there's £25 million pot in Skegness, for Skegness, and a £25 million pot for Mabel Thorpe. Hey, I am sky, it could be in the air, isn't it? Myself, you know, it could be, it's going to be what it is, isn't it? All this money, there's not much quantitative easing, you know, I don't know where all this money is going to come from, but we are aiming for Skegness, and that's why Tony and myself, and it's very rare we agree, but Tony and myself, we totally agree that we want one bid for Skegness and one bid for Mabel Thorpe. We agree with one board, we don't want, we don't want two boards, because that's ridiculous, because we haven't, we haven't got the power here. Northern Lincolnshire have got Ross, the fish man, he's in there, you know, does all the educational stuff, he's their chairman. We've got Sarah Louise Ferburn from Ferburn Eggs, and second-in-command on the board is Chris Barron from Watlington, he's a very worldly-wise man, and we are working, we're working our socks off him, and I think we was given a lump of money by government, and we are working hard to do that, and I would like Skegness Town Council to back what Tony says tonight, and let's go for one bid, but trust me councillor Anderson, it's all for the good part, you just give me a call personally, and I'll brief you anytime you like, we're spending a lot of time, a lot of hard work, thank you.
Thank you councillor Dennis. Councillor Dan Kirk, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In reference to, I've got two things, in reference to point of order, I understand that we've got a councillor whom is struggling to mute the microphone, admin, if it's possibly the Kato Steve, can you manage that on his behalf?
Yes, please.
Because we're getting dog barks and things like that, which is.
Yeah.
It's okay, it's okay. Secondly, that's why I wanted to hear that, I'm happy to adopt councillor Ty's report and include his recommendation that we do not support a single East Lindsay application, that we do a single, a town-by-town application. Thank you for the comprehensive report, and also councillor Dennis, although he's not speaking on behalf of this board, but regardless, thank you for that verbal input as well.
Thank you councillor Kirk. Councillor Claxton, please. Councillor Claxton?
There we go. Just a question for the councillor Dennis, really, just, I'd like to just know where these people got chose from the board and how they got chose, because, no offence.
Representative, sorry.
I'm still, but I'm still new, but I, I don't know any of these names.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dennis, he's got his hand up anyway, so we'll bring him back in.
Yeah, certainly, it's a good question, I'm quite happy to answer it. The truth is, I don't know, I was approached to, I was approached by people off, not, not within East Lindsay district council, but I was, I was, I was like, if you like, recruited by Sarah Louise, who was fronting the board, and she wanted members of the business community on board, and she asked me, would I come on board? And I said yes. I've had no input at all into any of the committees, I've just been asked, and I was quite happy to go. So, you know, you know as much as me, I do know the members on the committee, as far as I'm concerned, in the business side, there's Stuart Hardy from Hardy's Animal Farm, there's a guy from Micro Clean, there is John Chappell, who's my vice-chairman, accountant and businessperson, and that's as much as I know.
Okay, thank you councillor Dennis, and councillor Anderson, please.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you to councillor Dennis and obviously councillor Ty for the hard work they've done. I wasn't having a pop at our two councillors, I know they've been working, but if we're talking about public money, and I agree with councillor Claxton about appointees, obviously, yes, there needs to be some business community there, but also, I have to ask about board members, I did ask this question, ordinary people from the community, within the community, would have liked to go onto these boards, but they were excluded, and people from the business sector were just shoveled in to, onto these boards, which in my view is wrong, because if you're trying to pull in the community with public money and spending public money, that's what it is. Therefore, there needs to be some people, you know, who want to join these boards, like the trust board, like the NHS trust board, like other boards that are, you know, in the public domain, you have a variety of people, business sector, ordinary people, independent people, all sorts, but again, that's the only problem I do have with that, but thank you councillor Dennis for explaining the bid.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Dennis, you've still got your hand up, did you want to come back in, or would you like to lower your hand? Do you want to come back in? We'll bring councillor Ty back in. Councillor Dennis?
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Oh, councillor Ty, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I totally agree with councillor Dennis, if, if we get this campus, the college and the campus coming to Skegness, make no mistake about it, we'll be geared up for the next 30 years, which is totally good for Skeg, absolutely brilliant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Dan Kirk, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just remind that I'm happy to propose the support, so hopefully I'll get a second.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second, councillor Anderson, you seconded?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, all in favour, please show. Councillor Saxton, I can't see on my screen, for some reason, so if he's got his hand up, then that will be carried. Thank you.
Sorry, I'll take that back to the connected board, and I'll inform them of our decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Ty. Okay, moving on to agenda item number 12, updates on insurance claim, the items stolen from the St Mary's cemetery, the negotiations, an insurance settlement figure of £9,368.24 excluding VAT has been agreed and received.
Unmute yourself, Mr Clark.
Dan Clark, you've got yourself unmuted.
As councillors will remember, the insurance claim was put in, we've been through a process of going back, was always comparing prices of the items that were stolen, we've agreed a figure that's in front of you, and that will enable us to replace the equipment that's required.
Just before bringing the councillors in, I see we've got the deputy town clerk, she's just raised her hand, Kate. It's just something.
We've missed item 11.
That's right.
We've missed item 11.
Not doing very good tonight, am I? No, it's item 11. Okay. Sorry. Before we go any further on that one, then we'll go back to agenda item 11, I'm sorry. We've read the report, we'll move to that in a second. Agenda item number 11, new policies for approval, draft tree and fire policy attached.
Well, the policies are there in front of you, we have started to get a number of issues with trees, people complaining about trees, and this is really just to make sure that the council has got a sound view on how it will treat its trees going forward.
Okay, councillor Dennis, please.
Yeah, could I move this, please? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dan Kirk.
Yeah, I'm happy to second that we adopt this policy.
Okay, thank you. All in favour, please show. Okay, councillor Saxton has got his hand up, and that's carried, thank you.
And, and Mayor, there's also the second policy there, which is the fire policy, and it sets out responsibilities, and now that we own a building that's occupied by staff, and will be, have members of the public coming in, we need to have this policy in place, and it just sets out the responsibilities and how we will deal with that, so again, it's for approval.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Edington, please.
I've nothing to say actually on this one, I left it up by mistake, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Councillor Billy Brooks?
I'll propose that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Kirk?
Thank you, yeah, I'm happy to accept. Just a quick question beforehand, however, have we got in the regular testing procedure, and I'm assuming that's occurring within the, within the building?
Risk assessment.
Yes, yeah, in addition.
We carry out, we carry out a weekly test of the firearm system, and that is noted in a register.
This is purely for evacuation?
This is also to ensure that the various devices within the building actually operate, so for example, we have, some doors have got mag lots on that they release, that the doors at the front, which are automated, that they open, that the fire grill between the kitchen and the hall, if that's open, that will automatically close, so there are, there are procedures in place to test those, and we have a process of moving around the different fire points, testing those fire points, so that each over a period of time, each fire point gets tested.
Thank you, Miss, thank you, Town Clerk, I just wondered why that didn't occur within our fire policy, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Anderson?
Yeah, just to explain, the mute button's come back on the control panel now, so you won't hear the noise of your neighbours and the dog barking, but I think councillor Kirk was going to, has asked my question, I'll second it, okay?
Thank you, thank you. Okay, go on to the vote, please. Once again, if councillor Saxton, if he's on screen with his hand up, then that's carried, thank you. I thank the deputy town clerk there for my error, I knew she was raising her hand for a reason. Moving on to, back to agenda item number 12, the update on the insurance claim, we've had the figures there given to you. Councillor Dennis, please.
Okay, would like to move it, please, thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Dennis. Councillor Anderson? Okay, thank you. Councillor, councillor Adrian Finley?
Yeah, just a quick one on that, Steve, have we learned by our mistakes and we upgraded the security, so we don't have to go through this again?
We're not currently storing any, any equipment at the cemetery, which, as I mentioned as previously, causes a bit of an operational problem, because we have to move equipment there, but there is currently no plans in place to do that, there would obviously be a cost implication which isn't budgeted, so once, once I've had time to look at that, I will bring it back to the council to look at, but as I say, there's currently no budget in place to implement any changes.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Dan Kirk?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In response to councillor Finley's concerns, I did have a conversation with the clerk quite some time ago, actually, with regards to a relatively cost-effective security system that would use solar as our source of electricity, and it's, the price of that sort of technology has come down so massively, I think that investment as a, as a council to allow the machinery to be used.
Sorry, can I just, sorry, can I just come in, can councillor Dennis, please turn his microphone off, please, I've got feedback coming through, thank you. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you for that. Yeah, so I believe that the investment of that equipment would easily offset the additional time in wages and fuel that our staff would be incurring, so perhaps this is the, on the agenda for the clerk, once some sort of normality can resume and that workload somewhat decreases, but yeah, it is definitely affordable, and I think it could easily be done for under £2,000 to have a solar green energy storage and CCTV system or equivalent in that area.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so it's been proposed and seconded, all in favour, please show. Once again, I've got councillor Ty with his hand up, and I can't see councillor Saxton, if so, then that is carried, thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item number 13, the consideration of planning applications. 13.1 MBNL planning permission, the erection of a 10-metre sub-tower on the existing modified grille arrangement with six number antennas located on the rooftop, installation of three number 0.6 metres diameter transmission dishes located below antenna systems on the sub-tower. Installation of three number, zero point six metres diameter transmission dishes located below antenna systems on the sub tower legs to include ancillary development, existing six number antennas on the site to be removed. That's at the County Hotel North Parade, Skegness, PE two five two U B. Councillor Anderson, please.
Yeah, I'll move it, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Kirk?
Yeah, this is an upgrade to our mobile telecommunications system. The County Hotel has been a main cell site for a large quantity of Skegness. It's nice to actually see that our telecommunications systems are happily upgrading, whereas BT Openreach are failing to upgrade our broadband systems and have nothing in the pipeline for the next 10 years. It's absolutely astonishing, but that's a conversation for another day. So it's a welcome investment. It should hopefully give, I believe, 5G technology potentially and a significantly improved 4G technology, which for some reason will end up with a faster internet connection off a bloody mobile phone than through broadband. Excuse my language, sorry, Mr Mayor.
We make these errors on telly, we'll get two hundred and fifty pound for that one, back to the, to the pot. Yeah, this, this is the second one actually, in a couple of months upgrades, which is gratefully received. I've got councillor Dennis with his hand up, would you like to comment councillor Dennis?
Beautiful, I'm a member of Eastlindsay Planning and really don't want to be involved in any of this. Are we done, basically done with the meeting now? Is it just planning and then that's the end of the meeting, town clerk?
It is.
Yeah.
Okay, so I say good evening to you all, stay safe.
Okay councillor Dennis, thank you. Okay councillor Dennis has gone, so we can continue. So it's been proposed and seconded, all in favour. Councillor Dick Edington, did you want to speak on this? Or are we voting? Just, I've just seen councillor Edington's and did you want to, are you voting councillor Edington or would you like to speak?
No, I'm not, because like councillor Dennis, I'm on the district council's planning committee along with councillor Cunningham. So I will withdraw for the, for the rest of the meeting, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Maybe we should ask councillor Cunningham then, just if he's, because I know he has problems with this councillor Cunningham, has he left? The meeting. Councillor Cunningham has left the meeting as far as I'm aware as well, okay. So we can all go to the vote for this one, it's been proposed and seconded, all vote, please. Councillor Tye's in there. And if councillor Saxon's in there, we've got the majority. Okay. Thank you. Okay, that's carried now. Okay, moving on to thirteen point two, Mr A. Pritchard. Kalini Beacon Way, Skegness, planning permission, erection of two number blocks of three numbers terrace flats, total of six numbers dwellings with associated garaging and construction of vehicle access on the site of an existing dwelling, which is to be demolished. Councillor Burnham, please.
No, sorry, I'd left the hand up.
Okay, thank you councillor Claxton. Is there any, any objections in for this?
There's no objections from members of the public. The Lincolnshire County Council Pathways Officer has raised some issues because there is a footpath and right away that goes across part of the site. So they're in discussion, I understand.
Just before I bring councillor, just before I bring councillor Anderson, wasn't there some issues with this town clerk with the drainage on that, on that area as well? Wasn't, I came onto the planning last year and wasn't there some issues with the drainage?
I can't recall, I can't see any, there isn't anything currently on the planning application as is before you in respect to that, so I can't remember.
I'm probably getting it confused with another site then further down the road, sorry. Councillor Anderson, please.
Yep, yeah, I have been consulted by yours and mine, Mr Mayor constituents regarding the footpath. There are some concerns for walkers. There has been consultation with the Lincolnshire County Council. So again, before I can move for approval on this, I would like to see where the footpath would be diverted as the local ward members, along with yourself and other ward members in St Clement's Ward.
Okay, thank you councillor Claxton.
Personally, sorry, personally, I can't see this going forward if there is objections from the county council for a footpath. If this is, if this has been complained about by people in my ward, there's no way I can, I can vote this through unless we see where that footpath's going to be diverted to, as councillor Anderson did say.
Okay councillor Susan Blackburn, please.
Yeah, I wouldn't support it if it was going to affect the footpath. But if you actually read the Lincolnshire County Council's comments and you look where the footpath is, it just runs along the side of the property that's being applied for. And they have also said that it's got to be open and available for people to walk up and down while it's being built. It isn't being diverted anywhere, it just runs along the side of where the property is going to be built. So it will stay the same, but they, they can't affect it, they can improve it, but they can't affect it.
Okay, thank you councillor Danny Kirk.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to propose that we support this application because, you know, we're only consultees, not the ones making the decision at the end of the day. With that information in mind, that that access needs to remain access. I'm assuming that there might be some mitigation with regards to lighting. If there's an overbearing property over a footpath that once wasn't, then they might have to provide some sort of street light at the side of the building. Maybe that is something that might need to be thought about. But I'm happy to support this application, I'm confident that those items will be mitigated.
Okay, thank you, I've still got people with their hands up if you do not wish to speak again because you just lower your hands because I think it's still up there. Okay councillor Anderson.
Thank you, yeah, I hear what councillor Blackburn says and yes, I did read it. My concern is it's got to be a condition, okay? That, that access remains open because I've seen it and probably you have and everybody else, that conflict occurs where when you have people using a footpath and people living near a public footpath claim it as theirs. So there has to be a watertight condition. And I note what councillor Kirk has said, there needs to be a proper thought of street lighting etcetera along there because of, you know, the issues that we know with no street lighting etcetera.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, can I just come in, see the footway, footpath officer has said that the, the footpath mustn't become enclosed and therefore has made some recommendations in terms of fencing, which is probably different to the recommendations put forward by the police, which usually wants high fencing. Or if it's a hedge, that it needs to be maintained to keep the path open. But it is of course for Eastlindsay District Council to make sure that if they, if they approve the application, that they put those conditions in.
Can I just remind councillor Burnham, councillor Ty and councillor Dan Kirk, you've still got your microphones unmuted. Okay, anybody else wishing to comment on this, this plan?
Yes, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Ty, sorry.
Yeah, I go for it, but I really must say that we've, we've got to make sure that the, the footpath is, is kept in place and probably lit if it is, if the building blocks out light.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to comment? Councillor Blackburn.
Yeah, I'd be happy to second councillor Kirk's proposal. And with the mention that we, we feel that the LCC's comment should be taken on board with when Eastlindsay do the final planning.
Okay, thank you. So we've got that quite clear, that we're going to go to the vote with this, providing that we keep this footpath, this footpath in place and secure it to make sure it stays there. So we've got to propose him a second, so you know councillor Kirk, would you want to come back in? Or are you voting? Councillor Kirk, please.
I was voting, Mr Mayor, I was jumping a gun, my apologies.
So just ask councillor Burnham, are you, are you voting councillor Burnham or are you, you want to speak?
I am, I am voting.
Okay, we're going to the vote then, thank you. All in favour, please raise your hands if you're voting. And once again, I can't see anybody now. So if councillor Ty has obviously got his hand up, I presume, and councillor Saxon, then that is carried. But I can't see, when we've got the plans up, I can't, I can only see councillor Burnham at this moment in time. Thank you. Moving on to item thirteen point three Fantasy Island, notice under article thirty eight for the local development order granting planning permission. That's the land at Fantasy Island, Sea Lane, Ingamals, Skegness, PE two five one RH. Councillor Dan Kirk, sorry.
Mayor, I was just going to come in and say that it's normal protocol not to pass any comment on developments that are outside of this, this council's boundary unless it has a direct impact. Yes, there are complaints raised by local residents in that parish, but it is for that parish to make those representations.
I fully understand it is not our area and we shouldn't be unless it has an impact on us. Councillor Anderson.
Thank you. The impact I was going to suggest is that it will create jobs for our residents in the town. So directly it does have an impact for economic development and regeneration reasons. But I don't, I'm not going to go into the detail of it, but for economic development and regeneration and job creation, you know, I would support any, any, any activity and investment like this, which is correct and adheres to planning, you know, consent.
I fully agree, if it was in, good for the area, then I would be in support of it as well. Councillor Dan Kirk, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. With the clerk's recommendation, I'm going to propose that we note the application.
Okay, thank you. So we've got councillor Kirk, so we note the application, do you have a second for that, please? Sorry, I don't know who that was, I've got three microphones, I've got councillor Ty's microphone on, councillor Saxon's microphone on and councillor Blackburn's.
Councillor Ty seconded that, I believe.
Okay councillor Ty seconded that. Okay, you've got your hand up still councillor Kirk, okay, we're going to the vote then, are we? All in favour then, please show. It's a wonderful thing, this screen, councillor Ty will have his hand up, I presume. Councillor Saxon, are you voting? Put your hand up, I can see you tonight now. Councillor Saxon, are you voting? I can't see who's, I'm presuming that. That's better, I can see a few more things. Councillor Saxon, are you voting on this one? Don't know whether he's in the room or not.
In the room.
I think it's carried. Just councillor Saxon is, councillor Saxon's is missing.
A majority have voted in favour.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to thirteen point four, Mr Jay Vernon, planning permission extension and alteration to existing dwelling to provide a two storey extension to form an enlarged kitchen diner with an enlarged bathroom and first floor and first floor rear extension to provide a shower room, three hundred and sixteen Drummond Road, Skegness. Councillor Claxton?
Just for the town clerk, any objections for neighbours or anything or?
No, I'm not, I'm aware of.
It's residential property, so I'd just say just move it through, there's no, if there's no objections.
You propose that we move it councillor Claxton?
Yeah, I propose that we move it forward, it's, it's just. It's an extension on this, on this, on this property, just, it's an easy, it's an easy one, so to speak.
Okay, thank you councillor Anderson, please.
Yeah, thank you. I don't see the street plan on this. Is, I hear what councillor Claxton says, but I don't see where the adjacent properties are to make sure there's no overlooking etcetera.
I think it overlooks the golf course councillor Anderson, I think. I do believe so. Councillor Trevor Vernon?
Yeah, I was just going to second that we move it.
Okay, thank you councillor Kirk.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to add, if I may, of course, we need to take into consideration neighbouring objections, but sometimes they may object under non-planning grounds. And I personally believe that this, although it is a larger, you know, raising the height of somewhat, some of the building, I believe it is generally in keeping with property in the area. And for that reason, and in conjunction to the fact that there's no objections, I'll happily agree with councillor Burnham seconding and the primary proposal.
Yeah, as I said, it does face the golf course and the rear of the land faces the fields towards Craft. Councillor Claxton, would you like to speak again? Now councillor Anderson, did you want to speak again?
Go to the vote, Mayor.
We'll go to the vote. Councillor Saxon, we can hear you, can we go to the vote? Thank you. Councillor Saxon, you've got your microphone on. So I think that's carried there, majority. Majority voted, is that right town clerk, can you see all those?
We have six voting for and the others seven now voting for, so yes.
And councillor Ty will have his hand up somewhere, he usually does, yeah, so we've got eight, yeah. Sometimes it's technology, okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to thirteen point five. And we run Morrison's supermarket, planning permission, erection of a canopy for home delivery, van parking. Morrison's Wembley Road, Skegness, we appreciate with the times that we're going through. I can understand why this has been put forward. Councillor Dan Kirk, please.
Yeah, I'm happy that we propose that we support the application. We haven't got an item for any other business, so yeah, I can't talk about that. But yeah, I'm happy to propose that we support that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Susan Blackburn?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second councillor Kirk's proposal.
Okay councillor Anderson, would you like to speak on this?
No, it's been done, moved and seconded, yeah.
Okay, it's been proposed and seconded, all in favour, please show. Councillor Ty will have his hand up, I know that. And councillor Saxon, are you voting councillor Saxon? No, just sitting there looking at me. Okay, I think that's carried, town clerk?
It's a majority, yes.
That's a majority, yeah. Okay. Is that the last agenda item?
It is.
Okay, thank you. So that brings us to the, the end of the meeting then. I thank you for your participation and your patience with me. As you know, hands and microphones spring up all over the place, but thank you for attending tonight. And we got a meeting on next Wednesday called council. Is that the first, I do believe?
Yes.
First of July at seven PM, yeah?
It is, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So we'll look forward to seeing you all next week. In the meantime, stay safe.
Can I just?